Call to order the meeting of the Lake Mills City Council for November 3rd, 2015. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Grundon?
Here.
Mr. Scharr?
Here.
And Mr. Kerkovich previously let us know that he would not be here this evening.
Okay, very well. Item three, correction and approval of the city council minutes of October 20th, 2015. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
Any changes or additions? Not call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Abstain.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion pass three zero.
And correspondence will start with Mrs. Fritsch.
Pretty quiet week, just, or two weeks, I should say. Some of the people in my neighborhood were happy to see the leaf picker-upper. And they've been working pretty hard out there, so, and when is the big brush pickup? Or has it been?
It has been.
Are we done with that?
I think we are.
Okay.
October the fifteenth.
Because people are still putting out brush. So.
I think, I saw the guys up picking up brush today, too, so. I thought that when we talked the last time, it had been over with by now, but.
The brush pickup was listed on our website as being the week of this week, November 2nd.
This week, okay, got it.
Diane, if I could tag onto that, just to let the listening people know that they need to keep the leaves on the tree lawn, not in the street, and please keep sticks and twigs separate from the leaves.
Mm-hmm, separate pile, right. I think we have new people who don't know about that yet, you know, that are still sweeping them into the street, because some cities do that, and if they came from a city that did that, they don't think to think about it. But no leaves in the street. Thank you.
Very well, Ed?
I have a couple. Steve, I was approached with if something could be done to the uneven alley between bumper to bumper and the pharmacy, for that small alley that's in there. I don't know if that's city jurisdiction or not, but they were asking me about that.
Private.
Pardon?
That's private.
Private. And then the other one, and I said we couldn't do anything about it, I was approached by a retailer about the employees parking in front of the stores across from where the Blue Moon is, in that parking area there that we're discussing, having it be parking or having it be a park with trees and et cetera, and the employees are taking up all the parking, not allowing the customers to park there, but I said that was not something that we could handle. That's something to go before the Chamber of Commerce and the business.
Well, it's a two-hour parking limit.
Yeah.
It is a two-hour parking limit.
Is it two hours there?
Yeah, it's two hours everywhere downtown.
That was it.
Okay, Mike?
I had a couple things. First one was more talk about the bike lane and other ideas people had, and after talking with Mr. Wilkie, we found out the reason that Sun Prairie could do what they did is they actually didn't take federal money. Is that correct?
They got special, I'm not guaranteeing this, I don't know, but I know that when we contacted DOT, they said that our project required it based on our funding, which tells me that Sun Prairie got some kind of funding outside the federal requirements, which would be the only way you could get that.
Yeah, so my take on it then is we've already asked, and it's been answered a couple times now, and we won't be able to, I guess, circumvent their rules. It looks like we will have a bike lane on the road, and there's, that's about all there is to it.
It's not like we didn't try.
Yeah.
You were there from the beginning.
Yeah. And then the other one was some more talk about speeding down in Brookstone, and our chief of police is taking the ball on that, and he's actually going to go down there and sit with Mr. Wilkie and the person that's asked us to look at it. They're going to sit down there for an afternoon or so and see what they see. Thank you.
I only have one thing, and that kind of goes back to an unfortunate instance where a bicyclist was hit by a car recently by a motorist that was passing on the right side of a car that was turning to the left, and thinking that was a bike lane and that they were basically immune to having cars go in their lane. I just want to point out that on South Main, there are, right now, there are no bike lanes. It's, the symbols, the, what are they called?
Sherrills.
Sherrills. They're intended just to remind the motorists that there is bicycle traffic on South Main. I'll bet there is no designated bike lane as of yet, and that will change once the project is done on South Main and a new road's put together. Then there'll be two bike lanes, and they'll be designated with striping, but right now, just be careful and watch for bicyclists and pedestrians, and especially now where it's getting darker early. The other thing, Steve, that I have a question of is that I know we've brought this up about passing on the right on South Main, and in Fort Atkinson, they have a bike lane designated on Route 12, and they have signs on there specifically directing drivers not to pass on the right, that those lanes are not intended for automobiles. Is there something that we could maybe look at to maybe do something like that?
It's possible, once the designated bike lane is in the street. Because what the state law says is you can pass on the right at an intersection provided that there's adequate space, and it might be the case that the bike lane now takes that space away.
Okay.
And so we'll certainly look at that before 2018 when we have the designated bike lanes.
That would be great.
And if it's possible to control that, I know that that's something that you've wanted to do, we can certainly bring it to your attention at that time.
Great.
And it's been before the former council members, as far as where the school was on South Main, not to have parking allowed, or passing, rather, on the right in the school zone, if you remember that. We talked about that at least once, if not a couple of times in the past, just because of the danger of that area.
Just to remind everyone that, you know, we're back on standard time, it's getting dark earlier, the kids are active at dark because they're going back and forth to the school. Just please be careful around that school, especially, so. That's all I have. So we'll go on to item five, which is questions and public comment, and seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close that, and go to item six, the city manager's report. Steve, please.
I've received the state municipal agreement, and it will be on the next agenda to get authorization to sign it. I think that most of the items are consistent with what we've discussed, a few things that I wasn't crazy about, but they'll be in that report. We're starting the soil borings for Highway 89 South for the water and sewer utilities, so you may notice trucks and engineers floating up and down the street. I think the company's PSI. The, I don't know, have you been by the Public Works Building on CP Avenue? They've started working. They have done mainly demolition to this point. There are some issues with the fill under the building, under the existing building, and that is creating some problems that we may have to resolve. So Betsy and I will be working on that. We may be back to you with that. The Brookstone stop sign? I think that most staff, well, I know all the staff does agrees that that's not an appropriate place for a stop sign, and there are other options. There are more traffic calming options than just a stop sign, so we'll go down there, we'll take a look at what the traffic's like, we'll get some runs on it. I gave you a letter tonight about a pinnacle tree. You probably want to talk to Rob about that at some point in time. I gave you another document tonight, which I find fascinating. It's the Jefferson County Rail Initiative, and I can't believe how much traffic is shifting to railroad. And railroad's becoming a real issue in economic development and industrial location these days, and for cities like Lake Mills, which no longer has a railroad, having a transfer station is becoming more and more important. So there's a lot of discussion in there about how cities like Lake Mills can take advantage of relatively close railroads through transfer stations and how to get them set up and those types of things. So that's pretty, there's a lot of information in there on that, and a lot of discussion about where Jefferson County is moving towards. We've already done a lot of work in upgrading other railroads and plan on doing more yet. There will be a city chat at 8:30 a.m., November 20th. Probably the next big item after the state municipal agreement on the next agenda will be TID number four amendment. Yes. Staff met with the representatives for the Gunlock Development. They are redoing the, well, they're adding a deceleration lane along the north side of County Highway V, near the one driveway, and they're redesigning the pork chop, the area that delineates the, which direction you can turn in and out of that site to try and get the traffic to have to actually turn so it doesn't try and come back around. November 16th through the 20th is American Education Week, and Cape will be putting on some events at the Lake Mills Elementary School. The sidewalk poetry pavers are now in. They went in with the concrete that was poured for the handicap, and we did some other spots there, so there are three more poetry pavers in the sidewalk around the Commons.
Are there, are they like one on each side, or what is the location of those?
There's one on the south side, there's one kind of across from Bank of Lake Mills, and then there's one right next to the handicap ramp. Wallace Park's parking lot has been paved, so if you want to drive down there and look at that, it looks pretty good. They're working on the American Way Water Main. We did get all our documents and everything out of that. I know at one time we were a little bit concerned about that the Corps of Engineers had requested a review of it, but actually what happened is is they had a long period of time between the one person leaving and the new person getting hired, and he just wanted to get caught up in what had been going on and see if there was anything he needed to look at. So we had the same event with the dam. He called and asked for all the documentation on the dam, but he also then, a week later, sent us a document saying that it didn't need to be reviewed. Wastewater permits, I know you guys have been kind of following along. We've been working with several businesses on their permits and how we were going to work through that. I think that we're getting to the point where they're going to be resolved.
Good.
One of the big items that we've been doing down the last year is the meter reading best management practices committee. We've developed a lot of processes and put in a lot of ideas, and we're really starting to move forward with getting caught up on our meter reading and cross connection, or not our meter reading, our meter change out and cross connection issues, and so that's going pretty well. A lot of it has to do with process and documentation, which has been a real issue, and we're kind of getting it computerized and accurate and getting it where it actually gives us some good data.
Quick question.
And so we're looking at starting something similar here shortly, where Betsy is going to be in charge of the billing best management practices committee, so. Any questions?
I have a quick one on the meter. When meters are replaced, is that a city meter, or is it a owner's meter, private?
First meter put in is paid for by the homeowner.
Okay.
After that, the city replaces it at no cost. Some of the bigger issues are getting in and out of the homes. A lot of times people aren't available, or they don't want to let you into their house, or getting access now after years is very difficult, so.
Could you repeat, so the first one is the owners?
Yes, the owner pays for it, after that, the city pays for it.
We already, we already have one, why would we want to pay for another one? I understand why, but I'm playing devil's advocate here.
You have to replace the meter by DNR law or administrative rules. You're supposed to replace the meter every 25 years.
Ah.
You have to test it every 10? I think every 10 years you have to test the meter, so you have to test to see if it's still accurate, and then after 25 years, you're supposed to replace it, or at least go through a full certification to verify that it is an accurate meter yet. We have a pretty substantial number of meters that exceed both those categories, and we've done some analysis, and we believe that there are certain groups of them that are running slow enough that they are a significant water loss issue.
Do we have a program like we do for sidewalks where they can pay for it over a while, or aren't they that expensive?
Well, the initial one is about, usually goes with the home expense the builder puts it in, so, and it's generally depending on which one they choose, somewhere between $60 and $100.
But what about the existing homes that need a new meter?
We put it in at no charge.
Oh, okay, that was my question. Okay, I was wondering, like me.
Yeah, it's an existing home, and it needs, and you're at the 25-year time period, and it needs to be changed out, we do that at no cost.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions for Steve? Okay. Oh, just a comment, thanks for getting that water, or tell Public Works, getting that water leak fixed on South Main there.
I noticed that there was another leak at the corner of Milton and Main Street.
Like this right in front of my house by my drive that needs to be replaced.
It's not, what happened is is the other one was a water leak.
Uh-huh.
And so they shut the valves off.
Yeah.
And then they opened it back up, and those valves are so old that the packing material that keeps them from leaking gets bad.
Oh.
And so then what happens is is they leak for a while. They may leak to two weeks, they might leak for four months, but eventually the water gets that packing, so it expands and seals up again.
I see.
And the little bit of water that leaks out from there is cheaper than the $5,000 to dig it up and replace the valve, so we, particularly on South Main, where we know in two years we're going to go dig it all up anyways and replace it, it would be, it wouldn't be to our best advantage. So we try and watch, there's some of them, I think there's one up by St. Xavier's, which I'm pretty sure we're going to have to replace, but those water valves, they, they're touchy when they get old.
Yeah.
Because the packing just isn't made to last that long. That seal, you know, if it's been in there, some of those have been in there 60, 70 years, that material that's, the seal doesn't really, wasn't really made to last that long.
Sure. Okay. All right, let's move on to acceptance of committee minutes. I have before me the minutes of the park board for September 16th, 2015, the senior center minutes of October 15th, 2015, the library board of August 17th, 2015, also the library board of September 21st, 2015, the joint Rock Lake Committee of September 1st, 2015, the planning commission from July 28th, 2015, the housing authority of August 25th, 2015. They'll go on record as read. And down to council business, we have one tavern operator's license. Misty, would you read that name, please?
Samantha Freeman.
Do I hear a motion of acceptance?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Any discussion? If not, call a vote, please.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion pass four zero.
And we have a public hearing for the comprehensive outdoor recreational plan. It's a five-year plan from beginning in 2015 to 2020. Let's see, Dustin is.
You're not going to participate in a public hearing, are you?
No, I'm just waiting for the.
For the next one. Seeing no one in the.
You're not going to let the public speak?
Seeing no one in the audience, we'll close the public hearing.
They will gladly step aside.
And go.
The invisible public speak.
Go to resolution 15-39. This is the 2015-2020 Comprehensive Outdoor Recreational Plan. Misty, if you would.
Resolution 15-39 Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan, 2015 through 2020, whereas the city of Lake Mills takes pride in its image and character as a livable small town in Wisconsin, and endeavors to provide high-quality and well-managed public parks and recreation services to its residents, and whereas a comprehensive outdoor recreation plan corp is a document prepared in accordance with Wisconsin Statute 62.23 that plans for the city's future park and recreation needs over the next five years, and plans for future needs and facilities for up to 20 years, and whereas the city needs to update the 2009 through 2014 corp in order to remain eligible for state, federal, and foundation grants, which along with local matching funds can be used to help improve the city's parks, outdoor recreation facilities, and open space areas to the benefit of Lake Mills residents and visitors. And whereas the city parks board and city staff have inventoried and assessed park and recreation needs for the community, and whereas the park board has compiled goals, objectives, and policies together with the park and recreation systems need, needs and improvements into the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan 2015 through 2020 to guide and manage the city's parks and recreational system, and whereas the proposed corp has been reviewed by the plan commission and has been found to be consistent with the city of Lake Mills comprehensive smart growth plan adopted in 2009, and whereas the plan commission has recommended to the city council that the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan 2015 through 2020 be adopted by the council in accordance with Wisconsin Statute 62.23. Now therefore be it resolved that after holding a public hearing on the same, the Lake Mill City Council hereby adopts the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan 2015 through 2020.
And do I have a motion of adoption of 15-39?
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
Discussion, and we see Dustin at the podium.
Thank you. This is actually the first time I've stood at the podium, and all the time.
You look good.
With you. It's a strange perspective over here. The resolution's a nice little kind of quick summary of what the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan is. This is a document that you've had for a number of years. As you look at it, it has a kind of a five-year timeline on its face, but it really does look out 20 years as to some of your other long-range plans, like your comprehensive plan. The rationale behind that is twofold. One, the five-year window is this is an action document. This is a policy document. It helps city staff to program and develop the park system, and the WDNR requires a municipality to have a current plan that has a five-year kind of focus to be eligible for any state or federal grant monies related to parks. Then the second piece to that, of course, is it's a long-range document, it has to have some foresight, so there's that strategic piece, first five years, and then there's, well, what are we looking at, what's on the radar, what's on the horizon, what are we keeping our eye out for? And that's important as a planning document to make sure as development occurs within the community that we are looking at, you know, where are we expecting to grow, which is from the comprehensive plan, then what kinds of needs will there be for park, recreation, and open space within the community? Don't need to tell you, but for anybody who's listening, Lake Mills is a gem, and one of the things that makes it a gem is the environmental features around it, obviously Rock Lake, and then, of course, the park system itself for places for people to congregate, recreate, and to just provide kind of overall aesthetic beauty for the community. Your Parks and Forestry Department certainly has been diligent about not just maintaining your parks, but developing your park system, and so this plan helps them to stay focused on how to expend, you know, limited resources, whether it's dollars or personnel, to ensure that we are developing a full park and recreation system to meet the needs of all residents and visitors of all ages. So the document that you have has a section on background, and we look at kind of the landforms and, you know, describe to the reader kind of what's going on in the kind of physical realm of Lake Mills, and then we talk about the demographics. The reason behind that is because we need to know who we're serving, so we're really, that piece is focusing on your community, how much growth you're seeing, and then kind of the breakdown of the residential population, ages. The needs of a toddler is different than the needs of a teenager than an adult and then someone who is an older adult. They all, you know, the older adults aren't looking for football fields, they want, you know, recreation trails and open space and nature areas, right? Toddlers and, you know, preteens, they want places to run around and have playgrounds. So, again, the idea is to be able to understand what we have here within our community for residents, and then also wedding that to you as being a destination community because of the recreational facilities, the Rock Lake, you have a lot of visitors here, and visitors like to take advantage of all of your recreational facilities, even though there seems to be a focus on Sandy Beach Park, but we do need to keep in mind what's needed long-term for all of your parks, you know, the replacement of equipment, the improvement of facilities, and then the growth of the community. The needs of the community are based on the National Recreation and Park Association standards. This has been a guideline for use of community as it is for many communities across the country to determine, you know, how much acreage do you need to serve a certain amount of population, and there are charts in there that kind of walk through that. There are three primary park types that, the active park types that you think about. First one is either a mini park, or a tot lot, or a pocket park. Those are very small, they're intended to be walked to from a, within a neighborhood. They are usually around a half acre or less in size. They might have a small playground, a little bit of unprogrammed green space, and maybe some benches or a picnic table. Those are nice because they're really only meant to be walked to within a quarter mile. You're not crossing busy roads for them, they're really to serve small neighborhoods. The last park plan you had really called for a series of, I think, nine new pocket parks or mini parks. That's all well and good, but in working with the staff and the parks board on it, they're very labor-intensive to maintain, and so that's really something you're going to encourage maybe developers to put in if they feel the need for their specific, when I say a neighborhood, literally just that development, or multifamily development, to make sure that if you have a larger multifamily development, you want them to have their own space to have their own functions, you know, so their own playgrounds and such, because there's generally a higher density population in a multifamily area, so you want them to have areas for congregating within their own development. Working with Rob, the city staff, and the parks board, decision is to really kind of get away from the city providing those specifically, still encouraging developers to do them, but the city's focus is going to be on the other two kind of active park spaces, the larger park spaces, which is a neighborhood park like you would find in Brookstone, or a community-sized park such as a Wallace Park. That's kind of the better use of the city's resources and for the long term for the community because they are, there's an economy of scale in developing them and maintaining them. A, the smaller the park, it still takes time to get to the park and maintain it in dollars and cents, and then that, again, with kind of finite resources, that's competing with your other park system needs, and then, of course, all of the other things that your city staff does around the community. That's not the only thing that Rob and his people are focused on, is park maintenance and such, so. So trying to focus on newer parks in our growth areas, and then completion. As lovely as your parks are, they're not done yet. It's kind of hard for people to think about that because there are some great amenities in them. But the parks board and Rob have been working for years on master plans for those parks. And so this document highlights those improvements that are still kind of, I'll say, outstanding. Still intended to yet be built, whether it's in Wallace Park, or Wetland Park, or Brookstone and the like. It includes Sandy Beach Park, replacement of some equipments, improvements of things. Tyranida Park replacement or improvement to the restroom facilities and such. Again, and over time, looking forward to make sure that we are providing the best long-term facilities that you can for the community. The map that Steve has just put up shows a bunch of green circles. It's really kind of hard to see for somebody, but you do have it available to you. The document is online for the public to see. So it does print out well and is quite readable. It's really showing kind of park service areas. And a neighborhood park, like a Brookstone Park, kind of has a service area of about a half a mile in any direction. So kind of a mile across. You can bike to it. They're really not truly intended to be crossing major roadways. Think of the interstate or eighty-nine. You kind of have them kind of geographically centered to serve multiple neighborhoods. We're looking at the growth, for the growth of the community, for three new neighborhood parks. That doesn't mean tomorrow, and it doesn't mean within the five-year period. It really is looking, that's that twenty-year horizon to start thinking. As development occurs, we need to make sure we're being mindful of providing the amenities that Lake Mills residents and people who are wanting to become Lake Mills residents and what they like about your community desire within the community. So you'll see one of them north of the interstate. The city certainly has been mindful as development occurs up there and has kind of gone through the plating process years ago, making sure that the environmental features over there are being preserved and that there is going to be active parkland. You see the same thing on the south end, so there's the two darker orange circles. Think south of the Glacial Drummond Trail on either side of eighty-nine. Now, those are large, open areas of farm fields. But if you were to overlay the future land use map from the comprehensive plan and that, you'll see that that's another high-growth, intended growth area for the community. With the eighty-nine reconstruction, which I know is going to be occupying everybody's minds over the next couple of years, the city's utilities project through there is really going to end at the, you know, south of the Glacial Drummond Trail. That area's going to be readily served now by utilities. So you're going to have property owners or developers kind of knocking on your door to start looking at doing development down there. The city has always had a very pragmatic approach to development. You certainly have made sure, and I'll kind of use Brookstone as kind of the case, to make sure that they are providing park facilities and that you have high-quality, you know, newer development to complement the historic development of the community. There's no reason to think that's not going to happen in the future. We want to make sure it's clear to developers that there is intended to be parks down there. Some of that land may be dedicated as part of the development, and it may be a case where the city would be acquiring some acreage as well. This is a long, you know, longer-term issue. This isn't tomorrow. This is probably not even within five years. But it's going to be in that five-to-fifteen-year window. And we need to make sure that we're looking at providing for neighborhood parks in that area to serve that new growth. Also down there, you see one very large orange circle. That is a future community park. We know we're going to need a large community park again, similar to a Wallace Park in the southern area of the community. Wallace Park still has items to be programmed in it to be built. The splash pad, I'm looking at Rob kind of off the top of my head. Splash pad, additional parking lots, concession stands, et cetera. That acreage gets eaten up pretty quickly when you start putting active ball fields in. So you can see that as nice as Wallace Park is, there's a nice woodland area and then other program space. That program space kind of takes up a lot of land area. And, you know, there are needs for soccer fields in the community. There are needs for other recreational facilities in a larger park area developed by the city in conjunction with new development. So we are looking at a future community park down in that area. Again, it would have a parking lot, the active ball fields, you know, whether it's lighted soccer fields or ball diamonds. Decision of that type can be made at a later date. We're not looking at this time of the development of the individual infrastructure in those parks, but we are keeping our eye on the prize, so to speak, on the land acquisition or dedication for the future. Again, years down the road. As I said, this document walks through your existing parks, park by park, to highlight which types of improvements still need to be made within them. And that's truly the focus of the five years of this plan in conjunction with preservation of some specific open spaces and connection of those parks with bike and pedestrian facilities to make sure that it is safe and easy for, whether young or old, to get from development, you know, a neighborhood to a park, or from park to park. You have a backbone system kind of with the Glacial Drummond Trail. With the improvements on eighty-nine, you're going to have some more nice bike head facilities. Kind of branching off of that is to make sure that we're connecting, and the city has always looked at bike and ped connections with its street and sidewalk plan, and of course, its bike and pedestrian plans. So that was sort of long-winded, but yes.
I'm just a little curious. The map that we're looking at now is talking about C-one down at the bottom.
That's that community, future community park, yes.
That land isn't in the city limits.
It isn't right now, no, but it is in your growth area.
So how do we, how do we get any control over that if we don't have it in the city?
There's a few things that happens. One, the city is allowed to plan for its future by the statute. So you have a comprehensive plan that shows we have a growth area. You have extraterritorial rights within one-point-five miles of the city's boundary. So you get to have a say in future land divisions in that area. So that's the first piece of it. As the community grows, or as development comes to you, and they're going to want to be connected to sewer and water, you require all land to be annexed into the city. That's been, as long as I have been working with you, and certainly long before then. So if a developer comes in and they want sewer and water, they're going to have to annex into the community. At that point, then they're under all of your codes and ordinances. But really, it goes to your comprehensive plan says, this is where we plan to grow. Your official map says this is where we plan to grow, and you've already planned for roads and such down there on your official map. The official map by state law also allows you to identify future park sites or other public spaces needed for utility installations and such. But parks specifically is outlined. So it's a combination of ways that you're allowed to plan for your future. So as a developer comes in, they know that there is going to be these requirements to work with the city on identifying the best location for a park, and then again, how to fund the acquisition. And you collect the park fee now, and...
Yeah. If there's development on that land, it will be in the city. And you can see this line right along the bottom here. That's where the municipal boundary agreement cuts through. So from right here all the way down and out to here, that's all, if it develops, it's got to be in the city.
So somebody can't just, even if they own the land, they can't decide to build a house there?
You can subdivide up to four parcels.
Mm-hmm. But what, in other words, let's say I'm the landowner at C-one, and I think, oh, I want my son to live here, so I'm going to build a house right where we say there is a park.
C-one is kind of a location?
Yes. It's a general area. You're looking at that, that ring is kind of that service area. You know you want a, as a community, you want a community park to serve the southern growth area of the community. And that's the general area that we're looking at putting a park. The devil is in the details. It is something that comes out as development starts occurring. The city starts looking at its infrastructure needs. And then you start working with a developer identifying, this is an area, like you did with Wallace Park. You kind of, we're going to do an industrial park, and then you carved off some land for the park itself. But you work with developers to identify kind of the best site. And again, a park of that size will be a little bit of land dedication as development occurs. But by and large, most community parks, there is an acquisition component to the, to the community. And again, that's where the park fees that you collect now for development can come into play for offsetting some of those costs to acquire land. As I said, this is many more years down the road, but you're planning now for those acquisitions because we do need to look that far down the road as growth occurs. And I'm looking over at Rob, but this plan truly focuses on completion of the system that you have now while looking forward to future land acquisition. The programming will come probably in a subsequent plan.
And there are a whole combination of issues that go into it here. As you sit down and you're working with developers, he's going to determine how, you know, what land works best for him, what land he's willing to give to the city, what land he's willing to sell to the city. There are already a bunch of subdivi, you know, houses that are subdivided in there, so that'll all play into how it gets located. And so it's more of a getting prepared and knowing that this is the area and starting to talk to them and say, how do you see this falling into your development and that type of stuff? The other piece of the puzzle is, is that, like Dustin says, this one's probably twenty years out. But it'll make a difference on how we locate the streets, how we run the water and sewer, how we run the electric, how we plan all the other streets that come into that area. So it's really a, okay, we know this is the area we want to be in. It also helps us think about where we're going to locate the other types of parks as we continue to move south. So it gives you a concept to work from to be able to start building the structure that gets you there and gives you the opportunity to have a successful park.
Yeah, I'm looking at Rob. How long has it taken to get Wallace Park to this point? How many years of kind of improvements and development has it taken?
Twenty, twenty years ago. Because it's been ninety-six or ninety-seven.
Yes. So again, there's this long-range component to this of looking at the future because that has been the way things have been done in Lake Mills. You've always looked to the future to make sure that you're providing those important amenities to current and future residents.
If we pass this tonight, then we would send a copy of this to the county, to the townships?
To the county, the town, well, we certainly can, and then the DNR.
You know, because...
The DNR is the important one.
Yeah, without the plan, any monies that are available, we would not be eligible if we did not have a plan.
Right. And one of those is the bike trail grant that we technically have received.
Yeah, the, well, even the last grant we went after, was that last year? For the overlook, two years for the overlook. They gave the city, because we said we were going to update the plan, they gave you an exception to the timeframe to have one on the books because they knew we're, said we're in the process of updating. But you do really need to have something adopted to move forward with. Because if you would like to pursue dollars, they require you to have an adopted five-year plan.
Great. Ed, you got anything?
I have a question on it for Steve, and that is, Steve, I see that you have the Rock Creek overlook. If you bring the map down a little, it's showing there is the red picnic table. Is that, and that was originally where we talked about tearing down the buildings? Or is, I thought that was behind us. Is that still in the works then, or you...
Well, let's put it this way. This is a long-term plan. And as you know, all the other agencies have made it so that there's, that eventually those buildings won't be there. So at some point in time, we have to figure out what we're going to do with that area. And so we left the plan in there, say, hey, if this develops as we anticipate it will because of flood plain and all the other issues that are involved, and the billing permits and the flood insurance and that, at some point in time, the highest and best use is probably going to be this park. So it's in there. We got the data. We got all the information. They can look at it.
Right. But we, the city is not going after those buildings.
No, not...
Dear God, no. Make that very clear.
We are not going after those buildings.
This plan is saying, because the DNR specifically does not want to see any improvements out there, in fact, that they won't let you make improvements to those buildings out there. They expect those buildings to be gone somewhere in the future. The staff in the parks board felt that if you're going to decide to pursue grant dollars to decide to do something out there, it should be in the plan for that, for that purpose. This plan makes no mention of timeframes. It makes no mention of, you know, pursuing a specific acquisition or relocations or anything of that. It talks about how those buildings are there, you know, and that's how they were developed over time, and that it is not the desire for the WDNR for them to be there in the long term. And it is an ideal location to provide... In fact, the overlook on the creek that connects between all the new dam improvements you're making provides a nice area for, on the southern edge of downtown, for congregating. And then, of course, it leads right up to the doors of City Hall. So we make no recommendations on timing or anything related to that. Those decisions would be made down the road. If you did want to pursue grant funding, they, something needs to be in the plan about what you're going to be looking for grant funding for.
And I'll bet you that about five to ten years from now, all, most of the property owners will be interested in that option.
However, it is not on the...
It's not on our plan.
It's not in our plans or in our sights, so. Put that one to rest. Mike, how about you?
No, I asked all my questions during the plan commission meeting, and...
Specifically that one?
Specifically the one Ed just asked, yeah.
Yep. Diane, do you have anything else?
Oh, I think, well, first of all, I think it's a good thing, whether we're doing it for money or not. I think planning is always an important piece of any community, and I'm glad to see that we're doing that. Plans are just that, plans. They're not the definite thing. But if you don't have some vision, then somebody comes along with some other vision, and all of a sudden, we're stuck with their vision instead of what's best for the city. So I think this is a good start.
And as all plans are, they are living documents, so they're always subject to revision as circumstances dictate.
Absolutely. And as is anything with the city, council is always the final authority before shovels go in the ground or dollars are spent.
Okay.
I do like the proposed pedestrian bridge up and over I-94. I hope I live long enough to see that.
That's important for the DOT because if they start making improvements up there, they need to know that you have an expectation that there's going to be a safe pedestrian crossing, whether it's connected to an existing bridge, or added to an existing bridge, or a new bridge, or a standalone pedestrian bridge.
That'll, that would be interesting.
Ozaki County, if you're familiar with Ozaki County, they built a similar bridge. That was funded by the DOT. They got grant monies for it, and I think that had a price tag of about one-point-two million. That was ten years ago. So it's not inexpensive, but it is certainly something as, if you have, if development's really occurring on the north side of the interstate, maybe something that you're going to pursue grant dollars for.
Very well. Well, I look at this as a step forward and a good feather in our city's cap. So let's hope we can eventually get our park system the way we really want them to be. Call a vote, Misty.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Thank you.
Very much, Dustin. Let's see, where are we? Item D, public hearing for the two thousand and sixteen general budget. Seeing no one for the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing and go to ordinance eleven fifty-four. The two thousand and sixteen general fund budget, this is the third reading. Misty, I hate to do this to you, but...
Like, can I read it?
I know it's a long one.
Is it okay if I read it how I read it the first time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Ordinance eleven fifty-four, two thousand and sixteen general government budget and tax levy ordinance. In ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operations of the general government and debt service funds of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin for the year two thousand and sixteen. The city council, the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordain as follows. Section one, there is hereby appropriated out of the receipts of the city of Lake Mills for the year two thousand and sixteen, including monies received from the general property tax levy to the various purposes specified in the budget presented herewith for the purposes therein stated. The following amounts. Summary of adopted general government... Summary of adopted general government budget for 2016. For revenues, 2015 budget, total revenues 4,719,200, 2015 estimate, 4,719,200, 2016 proposed, 4,808,000. Expenditures, 2015 budget, 4,719,200, 2015 estimate, 4,719,200, 2016 proposed, 4,808,000. 2016 debt service. Expenses, 2015 budget, 1,086,000, 2015 estimate, 1,086,000. 2016 proposed, 1,201,700. Revenues, 2015 budget, 1,086,000, 2015 estimate, 1,086,206, I'm sorry, 2016 proposed, 1,201,700. Amount required for... 2015 budget for the grand total, 3,377,000, 2015 estimate, 3,377,000, 2016 proposed, 3,597,800. Section two, there is hereby levied a tax of 2,396,100 for all purposes, and 1,201,700 for debt service on all taxable property within the City of Lake Mills as returned by the assessor in the year 2015 for the uses and purposes set forth inside budget. Section three, the city treasurer is hereby authorized and directed to spread this tax on the current tax roll of the City of Lake Mills. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage and publication.
Do we have a motion of adoption?
So moved.
In a second, please.
Second.
Discussion. Nothing's sure but death and taxes, right?
Yeah.
I just think the public should know that we've worked very hard to keep this down. Uh, it's a very, very small, what percent increase is it?
I think...
It's 1.55 in the...
Yeah.
Uh, general fund budget.
So, I mean, it's...
The debt one is, is more, um, I think if you look at that one. Um, but that, um, was primarily due to, um, some of the debt we took out last year, in fact, all the debt we took out last year.
I think public needs to know that every year lately, we've had more and more dropped on us from the state. Things that the state used to pay for, used to have ways of helping us, those things are disappearing and have disappeared, leaving us holding the bag if we want to continue it as we have in the past. And it's been very difficult to, to keep things, uh, level, and that's what we did here.
And, and just want to remind the public, when they do get their tax bill, look at it closely and, and notice that besides the charges for your city tax, there's also school tax for the public schools in Lake Mills and, and, uh, Lake Mills District, and also for the VOTEC?
VOTEC.
The Technical College, so it's just, it's, it just...
And the county.
And the county, so it's, it's just, uh, one part of your total tax bill. So, um, you know, look, look at, look at it carefully and, and evaluate it from that perspective. Any other discussion?
Having been out of, out of, uh, the state in the last two meetings, um, did council decide to put something in the gas bill, or decided not to? That discussion was here the last time I was here.
I think that discussion was just dropped, Ed, I don't think we're going to do anything.
All right, just, I was just curious.
But everything's available on the, on the web, and, um, certainly we have a, a dedicated staff at City Hall that will answer any questions that you may have, so, uh...
Or at the library.
And, and at the library, yeah, right. So, um, no question should go unanswered. So any other discussion? And I, I just do want to reiterate what Mrs. Fritsch said, that we, we did work very hard to keep, uh, keep the, uh, taxes down. Staff did a excellent job in, in, uh, in preparing their budgets for the coming year, so I just, kudos to everyone, and at this point, um, Misty, if you would call the roll.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Scher?
Aye.
Motion passed four-zero.
Okay, ordinance, I'm sorry, uh, public hearing, uh, for the 2016 capital budget, and seeing no one for the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing and go on to Ordinance 1155. This is the 2016 capital budget, this is the third reading. Misty, if you would, do the same.
Ordinance 1155, 2016 capital budget. In ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the capital budget of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin for the year 2016, the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin does ordain as follows. Section one, there is hereby appropriated out of the receipts of the City of Lake Mills for the year 2016, including monies received from the general property tax levy to the various purposes specified in the capital budget presented herewith for the purposes therein stated, the following amounts. 2016 capital budget. 2015 budget, total revenues 3,839,100, 2015 estimate, 3,839,100, 2016 proposed, 1,771,000. For total expenditures, 2015 budget, 3,839,100, 2015 estimate, 3,839,100, 2016 proposed, 1,771,000. Section two, there is hereby levied a tax of 118,500 for capital purposes on all taxable property within the City of Lake Mills as returned by the assessor in the year 2015 for the uses and purposes set forth in said budget. Section three, the city treasurer is hereby authorized and directed to spread this tax on the current tax roll of the City of Lake Mills. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage and publication.
And do I hear a...
So moved.
Motion of adoption for, uh, 1155.
So moved.
In a second, please.
Second.
Discussion.
For me, ditto from before, same things.
And again, the, the difference between the capital budget and the general, uh, budget is that the capital budget is for, uh, major purchases, trucks, fire trucks, squad cars, radios, buildings...
Dams.
Dams, big, big stuff. Um, so. Ed, you have anything?
No, thanks.
Mike?
No.
Diane?
No.
The, the one thing I'll note is, is that Betsy takes the general fund, the debt service, and the capital levies, and puts them all together into the levy spreadsheet, and, uh, those numbers have to come out, because the state has got a very tight window in which we can fit.
Right.
And so we've been running that levy spreadsheet off and on, um, every time we look at the budget. So we, we're confident that we'll be able to submit this as proposed and meet all the state requirements, which are very tight.
Very well. Misty, if you'd call the vote, please?
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Scher?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four-zero.
This is one that I didn't really understand until I really got into it, and that was Resolution 1537, Wisconsin DOT, Acquisition of Right-of-Way for the Commons Park Curb Ramps. Misty, if you'd read that, please?
Resolution 15 dash 37, Acquisition of Right-of-Way by Wisconsin Department of Transportation at Commons Park, whereas the City of Lake Mills is partnering with Wisconsin Department of Transportation, WISDOT, for the reconstruction of portions of Wisconsin Highway 89, Main Street. And whereas, in the proposed project, WISDOT is planning to reconstruct the curb ramps at the corners of Commons Park that abut Main Street to meet current design standards set by the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA. And the completion of the work at these two curb ramps will require WISDOT to purchase 0.017 acres of parkland for right-of-way purposes. And whereas, under federal highway administration regulations, it is necessary to determine whether the proposed project will adversely affect the activities, features, and attributes of Commons Park. And whereas, WISDOT is asking the city to officially concur that the proposed need to acquire the additional right-of-way to construct ADA-compliant curb ramps will not adversely, adversely affect the activities, features, and attributes of Commons Park. And whereas, the City Council understands that such concurrence with respect to the lack of the project's adverse effect on the activities, features, and attributes of Commons Park would allow the FHWA to make a minimal impact determination, which would satisfy the requirements of the federal regulations under Section 4 Sub F of the U.S. DOT Act. Now therefore be resolved that the Lake Mills City Council concurs that the proposed acquisition of 0.017 acres of parkland by WISDOT as right-of-way for the completion of this project will not adversely affect the activities, features, and attributes of Commons Park. Be it further resolved that the city manager has authorized to sign the October 8, 2015 letter from WISDOT, giving the city's concurrence that the right-of-way acquisition will not adversely affect the activities, features, and attributes of Commons Park.
And do we have a motion of adoption, Resolution 15 dash 37?
So moved.
In a second, please? And this is one I couldn't figure out, why would you need, why would you need a, a right-of-way for putting in your sidewalk and ADA, um, ramp at the end of it? But I guess they, they have their procedures.
Yeah, we technically own the park, and it's a cultural amenity for recreation, not roadway.
Uh-huh.
And so they would look at it as a right-of-way taking, and because it's, Commons Park is probably one of the, well, one of the most significant historical recreational facilities in the city, uh, it would be an issue. So now they're asking the council to weigh and balance the issue, so they're looking at... And from my perspective, if they didn't do the handicap ramps, the city would at some point have to, and then we'd have to give it to ourselves, we'd have to give it to the state anyways to build it ourselves, I, I kind of have a little bit of difficulty with the reasoning behind it, but, um... It does ask you to weigh and balance the issues in the community of, does it take away so much land from the commons that it wouldn't be usable for most of the activities that it's being used for?
Uh, I'd say that, uh, every citizen in this city and, and every visitor deserves, uh, a, a right to access the Commons Park, and this is how, how it's done. And I certainly, uh, I certainly can't see spending a lot of money determining whether or not we need, we need to do it or not, so, um, this is kind of a no-brainer for me, so. Any other discussion? Everybody saw the map, that little...
Yeah, I think they're kind of covering their butts.
Yeah. Yeah, probably, you're right.
And in today's world, you have to do that.
Yeah.
Well, and it is a technical thing, I mean, it's technically, it's set aside for public use, and then technically, we're saying it would be a roadway, so, just playing the technical game.
And, and, you know, this, this covers a very broad spectrum of opportunities. Let's say we're in, in Gettysburg, and you're now looking at encroaching on one of the battlefields. Uh, I would look at it a lot different than I do now. Um, so, but you're applying one law to every opportunity that you cross. So in this case, they're hoping that we, we look at it the same way they do and say, hey, it's...
Yeah.
It's de minimis.
Yeah. All right, why don't we go ahead and call the vote?
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Scher?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four-zero.
Springs us to Item I, this is a Resolution 1538, this is a fund transfer for a topo and boundary surveying in Sandy Beach Mobile Home Park. Would you read that, please?
Resolution 15 dash 38, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to transfer funds, whereas the City of Lake Mills City Council adopted the 2015 annual budget by Ordinance 1142A. And whereas, the adopted 2015 annual budget may only be amended by vote of the city council as provided for under Section 65.90 Sub 5 Sub A of Wisconsin statutes. And whereas, the Parks and Forestry Department has requested that the 2015 annual general budget be amended by transferring funds from Sandy Beach Payroll and Sandy Beach Social Security to Sandy Beach Contract Services. Whereas, the Parks and Forestry Department requests to have these funds available for expenses to topo and boundary survey the Sandy Beach Mobile Home Park. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills that the annual budget of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin for the calendar year beginning January 1, 2015, is hereby amended as follows. General fund expenditures, Sandy Beach Payroll, adopted 30,800, amended 19,700. Sandy Beach Social, Social Security, adopted 2,400, amended 1,500. Sandy Beach Contract Services, adopted 4,000, amended 16,000. Total adopted 37,200, total amended 37,200. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is hereby directed to give required notice to the public in accordance with Section 65.90 Sub 5 Sub A of Wisconsin statutes by publishing said adopted resolution. Be it further resolved that the city council does hereby authorize the council president to sign this resolution.
Do we have a motion of adoption of 15 dash 38?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion, any questions? Call the vote.
Mr. Scher?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Motion passed four-zero.
So now that we have the money, let's go on to Task Order Number 15 dash 07 for Strand and Associates for the, uh, the said survey. Go ahead and read that.
City Council Motion 15 dash 11 dash 1 dash 1, authorizing the city manager to execute Task Order Number 15 dash 07 for the development of a topographic and boundary survey of the Sandy Beach Mobile Home Park. Whereas, the City Council of, of Lake Mills pursuant to the authority conferred by Wisconsin State statutes, has established certain standards and procedures for the use of public land within the corporate limits of the City of Lake Mills. And whereas, the City Council of Lake Mills is responsible for the planning of the physical development of the city, including developments that, in the city council's judgment, bear relation to the economic and social welfare of the city's residents. And whereas, the city manager has received a proposal from the city's engineering consultant for surveying services agreement that prepares a topographic and boundary survey for the Sandy Beach Mobile Home Park on the south side of the city, and has forwarded that proposal to the city council for its review and recommendation regarding said proposal. Now therefore be moved that the City Council of the City of Lake Mills hereby approves the agreement for redevelopment services from Strand Associates, Inc., a copy of which is attached here too and made a part hereof, and authorizes the city manager to sign the agreement.
Do we have a motion of adoption?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Steve, tell us what you're going to do with this topo map.
A topo map is the, topo and boundary map is the beginning of, um, a serious set of surveying documents. So, this is the existing, um, survey documents for Sandy Beach. And, um, it doesn't include a topo, it's just a boundary, and it isn't even really a good boundary map. I, I assume that it was done as requested, because, um... A good boundary map would have all the trailers that were there surveyed, all the accessory buildings, um, and any other useful information, so like water and sewer services and that type of stuff. So basically what we're going to do, and then a topo, as you know, goes, gives you elevations up and down, and so it gives us start of being able to, um, do an accurate survey for water and sewer construction.
Okay.
As well as streets and other types of facilities, uh, consistent with the discussions that we've had about looking at, you know, what can we do with Sandy Beach Trailer Park? And we've, uh, we've had some pretty significant conversations internally. I'm sure we're going to get to the point where, um, we'll start having a lot of other conversations, but... All the ones I got are bad. Here we go. One of the other issues here is, is that, um, well... This time of the year is the best time to do it, because the leaves are off the tree, and a lot of it, of that type of boundary or topo work is done by, by satellite.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this area up here is all pine trees, so it's going to be done manually. So once you get this area set... So once you get this area set, then you set your benchmark and you start working back up. And so that'll give you all the data for being able to lay out, um, the new layout for the, the potential new layouts for the park, uh, some, how the water and sewer will fit in, how the stormwater will drain, um, a lot of issues that are related to, um, development in the park. So it 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 basically gives us, um, accurate information to be able to make decisions on, you know, what we're gonna do in the trailer park.
Very well. Questions? Any, anything?
No.
Call a vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Item K, this is Resolution fifteen dash forty. This is again a fund transfer for the Parks Department Equipment Trailer Purchase. Miss Steve, if you would, please.
Resolution fifteen dash forty, authorizing the City Manager to direct the Treasurer to transfer funds, whereas the City of Lake Mills Common Council adopted the two thousand fifteen annual budget by ordinance eleven forty-two A. And whereas the adopted two thousand fifteen annual budget may only be amended by vote of the City Council as provided for under Section sixty-five point nine zero sub five sub A of Wisconsin statutes. And whereas the Parks and Forestry Department has requested that the two thousand fifteen annual general budget be amended by transferring funds from forestry payroll and forestry health insurance to forestry equipment. Whereas the Parks and Forestry Department requests to have these funds available for the purchase of an equipment trailer. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills that the annual budget of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, for the calendar year beginning January one, two thousand fifteen, is hereby amended as follows. General fund expenditures, forestry payroll adopted fifty-three thousand two hundred, amended fifty thousand two hundred. Forestry health insurance adopted nineteen thousand six hundred, amended sixteen thousand eight hundred. Forestry equipment adopted zero dollars, amended five thousand eight hundred dollars. Total adopted seventy-two thousand eight hundred, total amended seventy-two thousand eight hundred. Be it further resolved that the City Clerk is hereby directed to give required notice to the public in accordance with Section sixty-five point nine zero sub five sub A of Wisconsin statutes by publishing said adopted resolution. Be it further resolved that the City Council does hereby authorize the Council President to sign this resolution?
And do we have a motion of acceptance?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And discussion? Rob, you got anything to add?
I can give you the equipment.
Sure, if you would.
It's pretty much, you know, what you're looking at. Um, you know, any piece of equipment has a lifespan to it. This trailer has been here longer than I have, um, so it's well overdue to be replaced. I had an opportunity, um, to get some money out of the forestry payroll with one of my full-time employees leaving us, and we didn't fill the position for a while, so extra funds were available on that. Um, so with looking at our, what we have for equipment, uh, one of our four trailers is in dire need of replacement, and I thought there was an opportunity to go ahead and do that.
Okay, any questions for Rob? No, Miss Steve, call a vote. Thank you, Rob.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Springs item I, Resolution fifteen dash forty-one, Wisconsin Public Employers Group Health Insurance Program.
Did you say I? It's L.
Huh?
Letter L.
Was it L?
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, you're right.
It's okay.
Duh.
Oh, it's hard to tell.
Okay, would you read that motion, please?
Resolution fifteen dash forty-one, Wisconsin Department of Employment Employee Trust Funds Existing Employer Options Selection Resolution, Wisconsin Public Employers Group Health Insurance Program, resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, that pursuant to the provisions of Wisconsin statutes forty point five one sub seven, hereby determines to offer the Wisconsin Public Employers, WPE, Group Health Insurance Program to eligible personnel through the program of the State of Wisconsin Group Insurance Board, Board, and agrees to abide by the terms of the program as set forth in the contract between the Board and the participating health insurance providers. All participants in the WPE Group Health Insurance Program will need to be enrolled in a program option. An employer may elect participation in program options listed below. With each program option to be offered to different employee classifications pursuant to collective bargaining. Individual employees cannot choose between program options. We choose to participate in the traditional HMO standard PPO with dental program two. The resolution must be received by the Department of Employee Trust Funds, ETF, no later than January one, for coverage to be effective January one, two thousand sixteen. The proper officers are hereby authorized and directed to take all actions and make salary deductions for premiums and submit payments required by the Board to provide such group health insurance. Certification, I hereby certify that the foregoing resolution is a true, correct, and complete copy of the resolution duly and regularly passed by the above governing body on the third day of November, two thousand fifteen, and that said resolution has not been repealed or amended and is now in full force and effect.
Do we have a motion of adoption?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Elizabeth, this is yours, isn't it?
Nope, it's missing now.
Misty, oh, okay. You wanna tell us about it, or are you happy with it? Is it a good?
Um, yes, if you're, I'm not sure if you recall about a month ago, in September, we had to send in a notice of intent if we wanted to to choose to participate in this. We got some more information since then about how it can be billed out. Um, currently, we do offer employees to participate in a dental insurance program. Um, it's kind of high-priced, the premiums are, um, they're a hundred percent employee-paid. This would be the exact same health insurance they have, but would add an option, um, for dental. Employees aren't required, they can opt out if they don't want to. Um, I explained to all the employees that it'll likely be that they will be paying one hundred percent of that dental difference. Um, and I just, I think it's a good option to give employees a little bit of a premium savings for some dental. It's not the exact same plan, but there's definitely some benefits to it compared to the other one, and the other one is still out there at this time. We'll see what happens after, after all this goes through, if, um, what will happen with that one. But right now, we'd have two options for the employees.
Was it received fairly well by the employees?
I think so. It's a little bit different, um, types of plans, there was a lot of questions, but everybody seemed to fully understand at the end that if they want, they can opt out, they don't have to participate. But, um, especially the the plans, I think with the family plans, it's quite a bit of a savings on for monthly premiums, um, compared to the other plan we offer. That one's about a hundred and thirty-two, a hundred and thirty-three dollars a month. This one, if they're paying a hundred percent, would be about sixty-seven dollars a month. So.
All right. Any questions or comments? Call a vote?
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Ordinance eleven fifty-six, oh, no, 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 Resolution fifteen dash forty-four, WPI Energy Contract Extension. Miss Steve, if you would.
Resolution fifteen dash forty-two, Lake Mills City Council Resolution to Approve Amendment Number Two to Long-Term Power Supply Contract for Participating Members. Whereas the City of Lake Mills, the member is a member of the WPPI Energy, WPPI, and like all other participating members, takes long-term, all requirements electric service from WPPI pursuant to a long-term power supply contract, each a long-term contract. Whereas the long-term contract between the member and WPPI is that certain long-term power supply contract for participating members dated as of July eleventh, nineteen eighty-nine, as amended by that certain amendment number one to long-term power supply contract for participating members between WPPI and the member dated as of November five, two thousand two, the member's contract. Whereas the current term of the member's contract and each other long-term contract will expire immediately following December thirty-one, two thousand thirty-seven. Whereas WPPI's revenues under the long-term contract have been pledged to secure the bonds issued by WPPI to finance ownership of WPPI's generating units and transmission assets, including Boswell Four, South Fond du Lac Units One and Four, the Elm Road Generating Station, and the Capex twenty-twenty Lacrosse Transmission Project. Whereas it is necessary that participating members extend the existing terms of the long-term contracts in order to enable WPPI to plan for, obtain, contract for, purchase and finance new long-term power supply resources, including but not limited to new generating plants. Whereas the member desires that WPPI be able to secure and finance new long-term power supply resources so that WPPI is able to continue serving the member and all the other participating members reliably and at competitive and stable rates under the long-term contracts over the long term, and WPPI wishes to be able to make new long-term commitments in order to be able to do so. And whereas, in addition to extending the term of the member's contract, WPPI and the member desire to make certain other changes to the member's contract set forth in the amendment referred to in the caption of this resolution, the amendment. Now therefore be it resolved by the Lake Mills City Council, one, that the amendment, the form of which has been presented to the Lake Mills City Council, is hereby approved. Two, that the City Manager and City Clerk are directed to execute and deliver the amendment to WPPI on behalf of the member to be in substantially the form presented to the Lake Mills City Council. The City Manager and City Clerk and other appropriate city officials, including the City Attorney, also are directed to take all their actions on behalf of the member as may be necessary to effectuate the amendment, subject to the requirement of Section Five of the amendment, which provides that if, by March thirty-one, two thousand sixteen, less than thirty-four WPPI participating, participating members approve an amendment extending the terms of their respective long-term contracts to midnight on December thirty-one, two thousand fifty-five, the amendment shall be null and void and shall have no force in effect. Three, that the member agrees to be bound by the terms of the amendment as executed by the member.
And do we have a motion of adoption?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
I guess Steve, I guess we're on the hook until two thousand and fifty-five?
Right. It gets us out there ways.
I have a question on if the, this hypothetical, 'cause I, WPPI has done such an excellent job that we pay less than most communities per kilowatt. Um, in a hypothetical situation, if they were to fail to get us that, um, good rate, and it was skyrocketing higher than other sources, what kind of penalty is to break the contract? Or is it breakable?
Um, no, I I don't believe it's breakable. You're locked. Um, and I I guess I tried to explain this in my memo that, um, they run their portfolio in a fashion where they try and make sure that their blend keeps them as low as possible. But there's always times when you own certain types of, of, um, electric resources that are going to be so new that you're at the high end rather than the low end. And we've actually kind of are cresting in the next two to three years where we will be as close to the high end as we're gonna get. I don't think we'll pass the other utilities, uh, that are in our area. Um, and eventually we'll start coming down again and being substantially lower than most of them. But that, that's all kind of a up and down process. Um, they work very hard and diligently to, um, understanding that our goal is to not be higher than the IOUs. Um, that being said, there, there's always certain conditions. We have a lot of, um, green resources. We, we're more than double the next highest, uh, utility or IOU in Wisconsin for the amount of percentage of, of green utilities, so wind and solar and, and dams and those types of things. So it, it, um, and that tends to be more expensive, too. So it, it's kind of a combination of, you know, the goal of being low, but also being the goal of, of, um, having a green footprint. And so they've, they've done it, as far as I can tell, is an excellent job of, of doing that and meeting the intent both to be environmentally friendly and economically feasible. Uh, and that's tough.
Well, I know in my discussions that there are other communities who would love to get into WPPI, but they don't take on new cus, or new cities, so.
They will under certain conditions, but for a city to, um, they have to meet, they have to fall into certain resource categories. Um, so it's not always, you know, you have to have your own electric utility. So if you have to buy your own, it's possible to buy your electric system from the IOU, but it's very difficult. The other one is, is that even if you do own one, you need to be a resource that's valuable to WPPI. So they look at it from the point of view of, how do you fall into our distribution? What connections do you bring us to other distribution resources, those types of things? So there's a lot of, of, that's why we have some in Iowa and some in Michigan, uh, 'cause they just, they get us connected to certain other types of resources or, um, types of packages that make it valuable to the whole group to have, to be involved. So yeah, you're right, you, you just can't say, I wanna be a member and get in.
Council, do we have anything we need to worry about?
I don't believe so. I'm in the middle of working on the legal opinion that's required for this contract, um, but I don't believe that there's anything to be concerned about. Prior councils, uh, have taken prior actions, starting back in nineteen eighty-nine, to become a member of the utility, and then, um, did an amendment in two thousand two, and that carries you out to two thousand thirty-seven. In the event that some circumstance arose, such as Mr. Grundin, um, posed, it could certainly be looked at at that time, but somebody would have to trace back all the way to the beginning and see what is in effect from the beginning going forward to determine what, if any, costs, what would be the cost. Certainly, there would be some cost to trying to get out, but, um, we're a member of the WPPI, we're part owner, and it would probably not likely ever be in the city's interest to get out of WPPI.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'm just glad we're in WPPI.
Yeah, me too. Miss Steve, if you would, please call a vote.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay, thanks for that insight. Um, go to item N, Ordinance eleven fifty-six, amending the tavern operator license fee and Class A liquor beer license quotas. This is the second reading. Just read the, uh, just read the title.
Ordinance eleven fifty-six, amending tavern operator, operator license fees and Class A liquor beer license quotas.
This will go on to the third reading.
Just a comment that it, uh, increases the price from ten to twenty-five dollars.
All right. And Ordinance O is, uh, eleven fifty-seven, petition for annexation, sim done, and I'll let you go ahead and read that.
Ordinance number eleven fifty-seven, in ordinance annexing territory to the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordain as follows. Section one, territory annexed in accordance with Section sixty-six point zero two one seven, Wisconsin statutes, and the attached incorporated by reference petition for direct annexation filed with the City Clerk on August thirty-one, two thousand fifteen, signed by the owners of the property, proposed to be annexed. The following territory in the town of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, is annexed to the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin. Section two, effective annexation, from and after the date of this ordinance, the territory described in Section one shall be part of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, for any and all purposes provided by law, and all persons coming or residing within such territory shall be subject to all ordinances, rules, and regulations governing the City of Lake Mills. Section three, ward designation, the territory described in Section one of this ordinance is hereby made a part of the first ward of the City of Lake Mills, subject to the ordinances, rules, and regulations of the City of Lake Mills governing wards. Section four, severability, if any provision of this ordinance is invalid or unconstitutional, such invalidity or unconstitutionality shall not affect the other provisions or applications of this ordinance that can be given effect without the invalid or unconstitutional provision of application. Section five, effective date, this ordinance shall take effect upon passage and publication as provided by law.
And Steve, this is the first reading, so, um, would you, do you have a map where that's at? Oh, okay, so that's that darkened area, and that's, there's not, there's nothing on that?
Right now, it's vacant land.
It's a vacant land, okay. All right.
It was part of a larger parcel in this area right here.
Uh huh.
And the city purchased right-of-way there.
Okay.
And split that parcel, and this was a remnant that was left over.
I see, okay. So, it's, we don't have to do anything else, right? Just go on to the second reading now, right? Okay.
Well, the third reading will be December first, and we've scheduled everything to, as part of the TID amendment and a whole bunch of other things, so December first is the day that it has to occur. It also ties into the finalization of the financing and other things for the purchase of the property.
Okay, so do we have? Okay, so do we have time for that then, or?
Oh yeah, we've got time.
Okay.
We, we've scheduled everything so that it can go the full three readings.
Okay, real good. Okay, so that was, let's go on to, um, item P, ordinance eleven fifty-eight, petition for annexation. Uh, this is also a first reading. Misty, if you would, please.
Mr. Scher, this is the same ordinance as eleven fifty-seven. Um, did you want me to read the entire thing or just the difference between?
Just the difference.
This is eleven, I'm sorry, ordinance number eleven fifty-eight. It's the petition for annexation by P M Y L L C. It's a first reading and this was filed with me on July twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen.
Okay. So this will go on also to the second reading. And Q is ordinance eleven fifty-nine, possession, petition of for annexation. City of Lake Mills, Elm Street Right-Away, first reading. And why don't you read that one?
Is, do you want me to do that?
Same one, isn't it?
Yep, it's the same one. That one's eleven fifty-nine. That's the Elm Street Right-Away. And that one was, um, filed on October twenty-nine, two thousand fifteen.
Okay, so that'll also go to the second reading.
Right, those three parcels make up that area around the Elm Street area there that, that will be redeveloping.
Okay. Uh, item nine, recommendation for future agendas. Anyone? Man? No. Staff, anything?
Uh, we have a couple items that are coming forward. Like I said, the SMA, the state municipal agreement will be on the agenda. What else do we have, Misty? We had, uh?
We have the six o'clock meeting.
Oh yeah, we have the six o'clock meeting, uh, with the insurance company representative.
Okay.
That is Tweedale.
At the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
And, um, there was one other item that I remember for sure, right?
It's the seventeenth?
Yeah, seventeen.
November seventeenth.
Right.
Yeah. But that's not the next meeting.
Okay, okay, I just, uh, wanna remind counsel, if you haven't got your, um, evaluation in.
Still haven't got.
Huh?
Still don't get the forms.
Didn't get a form?
They were all mailed out a second time.
You gotta have a mailbox, Mike.
You didn't mail me another one, did you?
No, yours was the only one that wasn't mailed out a second time because I got your voicemail saying you have it.
I got mine.
Mailbox is eating them.
I will go back to my office before you leave the building tonight and I will find you copies and hand them to you. How does that sound?
Sounds good.
Okay.
And how do you want us to deliver those to you? Bring it to the next council meeting?
However, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good. All right. Hearing no other future agenda items, I call this meeting adjourned.